Hello and welcome to the Downtown Showdown, a debate between the two candidates seeking an open Ward 1 seat on the Edmond City Council. Tom Robbins, Ashley Bradley. We are super happy to have them onstage with us here tonight in the Liberal Arts Building at the University of Central Oklahoma in Edmond, Oklahoma. George, thank you so much for the use of this facility as before. Wonderful, beautiful place, wonderful campus here at UCO. This is a debate for the Ward 1 open seat being vacated by Mr. David Chapman. However, Edmond rules, which are a little unusual, means every registered voter in the city limits of Edmond is eligible to vote in all three races that are on the ballot April 4th: Edmond Ward 1, Edmond Ward 2, and the mayoral race. It's a nice debate, though, is between Ashley Bradley and Tom Robbins. Let's give them a round of applause for being here. My name is Trace Savage. I'm the editor-in-chief of Nondoc.com. We're an online journalism publication based here in central Oklahoma. And I'm joined on this stage tonight by Joe Tomlinson, our reporter who covers the city of Edmond. He's leading up our Edmond civic reporting project, which we'd love to tell you more about later. Joe?
Hello. We want to offer special recognition of the financial sponsor for Nondoc's 2023 municipal debate series, The Oklahoma Chapter of the Urban Land Institute, a member-based organization focused on shaping the future of the built environment for transformative impact in communities worldwide. Thank you, ULI, for your interest in local civic discussions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Since we are in public, please do me the favor of silencing your cell phones. But while you're doing show, you can share this debate. It's being streamed on Nondoc's Facebook page and on our YouTube page. Again, N-O-N-D-O-C. Check out our Facebook. You can share it. It'll be up later. I also need to say this to the audience: Please hold your applause until the end of each round of questions. We'll have three rounds of questions tonight after our opening statements, and then we'll have closing statements as well. But keep the applause to ourselves so we can, you know, have people watching at home have a good experience. That's the format I talked about. We flipped a coin earlier to determine the order of opening and closing statements. Ms. Bradley, you will go first. Mr. Robbins, you'll go second. Ms. Bradley, the stage is yours. Two minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you. First and foremost, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Trace, for doing this, putting this debate together, allowing the community an opportunity to hear us once again before the election is over. I also want to thank UCO. It's been quite a few years since I've been in here, so this building's changed a bit, but it's very nice now. And then I also want to thank ULI for the sponsorship. My name is Ashley Bradley, and I'm running for Edmond City Council. A little bit about me, if you don't know me, I was born and raised in Guthrie. I've lived in Edmond for seven and a half years, and I decided to run for council because I learned that it was running unopposed. And one thing I really believe in is that people deserve the opportunity to choose their representation. I took that as a chance to throw my hat in the ring, if you will. Prior to that, back in 2021, you guys may remember one of the many battles we had with Hayford, and I helped build an online petition for that that helped the city ultimately buy the land and save it from development. I want to bring more recognition and awareness to Edmond's citizens and their voices, so that's why I'm running.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Robbins, two minutes to you, opening statement.
Well, I really appreciate Nondoc for hosting this debate and for all of you who are engaged and involved. Unfortunately, as we know, municipal elections have very low turnout. And while everyone is focused on the national presidential politics, it's really, "I'm running because I want to take out your trash." "I want to be able to provide great recreational spaces. I want to be able to support our schools." So ultimately, it comes down to having a person that's engaged in the community and putting that first. So why am I running? I'm running to make Edmond, Oklahoma, the best place to raise a family or to have your kids come back and live here or have your grandkids come or just a place that you can call home. And I'll do that by focusing on the following. Number one, transportation. Edmond needs a transparent transportation with dedicated funding to be able to meet those needs. Number two, education. That is the economic driver, and it is the gold star and shining light of our community. And we need to support our teachers and our public schools and do all we can as a one-team Edmond to be able to do that. Number three, public safety. We need to be a community that continues to invest in public safety and be on the forefront when it comes to mental health tools and resources that we can provide. I'm proud to be the candidate that's endorsed by the Edmond Fraternal Order of Police and the Edmond Firefighter Association. Also, the amenities that we have. So for example, the win-wins that we've been able to create at Mitch Park to have an opportunity for the Aquatic Center to be used by the high school, the new Edmond Tennis Center. And finally, you know, I'm running because I want to be able to make a difference. And so where I'm running for Ward 1, and I have a heart for Ward 1, I want to run for all of Edmond and make sure that your voice is elevated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robbins. We'll go to our first round of questions, which is titled "To Grow and to Govern." Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question. We'll rotate who answers first. Joe, you have that first question.
I do. Mr. Robbins, this first question is for you. Outgoing Councilman David Chapman has voiced the need for high-density housing in Edmond to ensure healthy future growth. Do you agree with his belief that Edmond needs new, high-density housing? 90 seconds.
So in my life, I have lived in a wide variety of housing. When I was in college, I lived in what we called the submarine, and that's because I had to literally step down to get into my apartment. And there was like a little like porthole that we would sort of peer and look out of for my basement apartment with my roommates. As I got a little bit older and got to go out to Washington DC during college, I had about, you know, a million roommates to afford rent. As I got married, my wife and I got together and had a small condo that we had rented. And then when we came to Oklahoma, we had a very starter home, and then we moved into Edmond, into Timber Ridge. And now I'm in my "I don't want to move" house. So all those represent different stages of housing. And for Edmond to be successful, we need to have all of that housing represented in Edmond. And so it broke my heart when I talked to the firefighters, and I asked them, "Do you think a firefighter living on a firefighter salary can live in Edmond, Oklahoma?" And the truth is, with a 408,000 median price to buy a home here in Edmond, that's great for some of our top earners and, you know, some of the people in our city, but it's not meeting the needs of our public servants, of our first responders, and our educators. So when I met with the Realtor Association and received their endorsement, I said, "One of the top priorities I have is to look at all types of housing." So the Edmond 2030 Plan calls for density, and it spread that out across, so not just downtown but also in the east. But I'm all for all the above options when it comes to housing in Edmond.
Ms. Bradley, same question. Does Edmond need new high-density housing for healthy future growth?
I think that Edmond needs multiple types of housing. I think one of the current issues that we're seeing is that we have developers that come in and are literally bulldozing existing houses and lots and putting up these apartments and homes that they're labeling attainable but are completely out of reach. I don't have an answer for that, but I want to work with the citizens to make sure that we continue to keep that in mind as we are working towards the attainable housing. I want them to know that we all are in it together, and we have to come up with a solution together.
So just to be clear, you do support new high-density housing?
Affordable, attainable, high-density housing, yes.
Wonderful. I have the second question. We'll start with you this time, Ms. Bradley. Please provide two answers here. One, what is the biggest issue currently facing Ward 1 of Edmond? And then, secondly, what is the biggest issue facing the city as a whole right now?
I'd like to say that we're probably one in the same answer. I think what the majority of people have issue with is traffic. I would like to say that a close second is probably like the responsible development and that they feel that the council just approves things without actually recognizing input from citizens. I think that as far as traffic goes, I do have solutions and ideas that I would love to bring to the table. I think that one in particular is focusing on our main roads and focusing on expanding those for traffic to help ease flow and congestion. I also think that we need to focus on transit options that would ultimately help the traffic and then also connectivity to help our pedestrians.
Great. Thank you very much. If you're interested in traffic, stick around for round two. Mr. Robbins, same question to you, 90 seconds. What is the biggest issue facing Ward 1 specifically? And what is the biggest issue facing the city as a whole?
Well, as I've gone out and talked to dozens of organizations and citizens and knocked doors, I'll ask them, "What do you think the biggest challenge is facing Edmond?" And the number one that I'll receive is transportation. People are feeling that, and it's impacting quality of life, and it's increasing costs to own an automobile. And it's just, you know, it's creating safety issues as well. But here's the difference: I have a plan to address transportation that's concrete. I believe our voters deserve a long-term, multi-year, transparent transportation plan that they can either vote up or vote down to dedicate funds. In addition to that, I know how it works. You have federal dollars, state dollars, county dollars, and then some city dollars. So let's break that down. Number one is that Congressman Tom Cole, some of you may or may not know, but he is chairman of an appropriation Transportation Committee in Congress. That means out of all the United States congressmen, he is the number-one person when it comes to transportation funding in the United States of America. Number two, one of our Edmond area representatives, Nicole Miller, who's endorsed my campaign, is the Appropriations Chair for the State of Oklahoma in the House of Representatives. I've met with Representative Miller. I've met and been endorsed by the former Secretary of Transportation, Mike Patterson. And day one, I'll be hitting the ground running, convening a group that will look at how do we have a long-term, dedicated, transparent transportation plan that our citizens can either give a thumbs up or thumbs down, and then we can appropriately allocate the resources as a city council. So I have a plan to do it. We'll get started day one, and we'll address that.
I've got the next question. Mr. Robbins, this will be for you. In June 2022, the city allocated more than $1 million in taxpayer money to local nonprofits. Each year, the Community Agency Review Commission, a citizen committee, reviews applications from nonprofits before making a recommendation to the city council. Do you support the city allocating taxpayer funds to nonprofit organizations?
Not only do I support it, I think it needs to be increased because any time that you can give a dollar and give $10 back as far as return on investment, that's something that we need to be interested in. This last week, I had the opportunity to go to Mobile Wheels on Wheel, or Mobile Meals on Wheels, and with a person go, and we went to 19 different homes. And I went by streets that I had passed by many times, either on a walk or in my car or with our dog or family. And I was shocked to see the need that exists in Edmond, Oklahoma. This ends up being one of the few just check-ins that these people have. And the conversations that I had with them were touching. I literally had a lady tell us, "Thank you so much for this meal. Without it, I could not stay in my home." So yes, those nonprofits who serve our community will have my full support. In addition to that, when I talked about the schools, I understand that we give money to the Edmond Public Schools Foundation. I want to take a look at that and go to our superintendent and go to our school board and say, "If we're one-team Edmond, how if we just wipe the slate blank and say, 'How can we create the best educational environment for our children in Edmond, and our city can support that?'" How do we do that? And everything's on the table, and I want to put that to the voters. I want to put that to the city council. But yes, absolutely, I want to support our amazing nonprofits. I want to support our education so that continues to be top-notch, and I will do that as a member of city council with due diligence, and I'll bring that up for a vote.
Ms. Bradley, same question. Should the city be allocating taxpayer funds to nonprofit organizations?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's important to mention them by name, as my opponent did on one of them, but just so that we get an idea of truly what these do for our community. Liberty Fest. We're going to take a pause right there just because that one actually brings a lot of money back to the city. So why would we ever want to cut that? I agree. Let's increase it. These are things that bring us back together, back to that community piece. Other ones that we have: Edmond Fine Arts, The Mobile Meals, Hope Center, Roundup Club, the Public Schools Foundation, Historical Society and Museum, EARC. These are just a few, and they're so pivotal to so many people in our community. So yes, 1,000% support them. I would do the same. I would increase the funding for them because they give back to us more than we'll ever understand.
Thank you, Trace.
Yeah, wonderful. We'll get the hang of this, Joe. We'll toss back and forth. We'll get natural out of it. Don't worry. I'm really thrilled to be working with him. He's doing a great job covering the city. Evan, hope you're following along. About a year ago, Joe wrote an article about the city council adopting what is called the East Edmond 2050 Plan, which sort of sets the city's strategic future development in an effort to accommodate the estimated 40,000 new residents who could live in Edmond over the next 30 years. Ms. Bradley, this question is for you first, 90 seconds. Do you support the East Edmond 2050 Plan and its outlook on development within the city? If not, how might you propose it be amended?
I do support the plan. I think one of the most important pieces of it is that it understands flexibility in planning, and it understands that this is going to be a continuous piece that we refer back to and see if it's working best for us. I think it's important that we look at I-35 and that corridor as the true center and heart of Edmond, and this is an opportunity for us to use that plan and modify it where it needs to be so that we can make Edmond the best place to grow. I think it's important for us to note that one of the highlights of the plan is the preservation and protection of forest and natural habitats. Also, the mixed-use planning just means that it's an idea and a plan that brings both sides of Edmond together cohesively.
Wonderful. Mr. Robbins, same question to you, 90 seconds. Do you support the East Edmond 2050 Plan's outlook on development? If not, how might you propose to change it?
As I read through that plan and all the documents, what stood out to me is an opportunity to be able to spread out some of that density so it doesn't just land in one area. We need to be cognizant of that number-one concern of transportation. And so as I look at that plan, I've literally, probably every day, met with a different stakeholder. And every single person has the thing that they like, that they want to see proposed for quality of life or to be able to serve our community. And so whether it's you look at Lake Arcadia, which if we're able to invest some dollars there, we can have some fantastic amenities for our community when it comes to trails and walking and nature and camping and boating. But what we lack here in Edmond is some dedicated funding to some of those resources. I don't think we actually lack plans. In fact, I've gone back, and there's been about 18 or so in just the last 20 years of multiple iterations of plans. We're really good at being stakeholders and coming together for a meeting. What we need to decide as a community, which I am committed to doing, is doing an up or down vote for our community and putting on the table these different things that are out there so that the community can decide if they want to offer up and support dedicated funding. I think a lot of them would have strong support, but if we just go and try to duct tape our way through it, we're always going to be playing catch-up. We're always going to have a frustrated population that they're just going to be seeing little spurts of construction and not understand the greater plan. So there's some great things there with ULI, the Urban Land Institute, who came and offered up also some great ideas. Putting all that together, I want to put it to the vote of the people.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. That's the end of round one. Give them a round of applause. It's not easy standing up here answering these questions. I mean, actually, it's kind of easy, but that's why we think it's important that candidates do it. We really appreciate you both being here. Are we sounding good on the audio? I think we're sounding good on the audio. That's the great thing I want to hear. Now, as we get to round two, the title of this round is "The Built Environment." And I want to reference again the support we've had from the Urban Land Institute. If you spell "built" sideways, you get "U-L-I," and we really appreciate their support. Now, it's my favorite question of the night. We talked about traffic earlier. I've got a traffic toss-up question for you. Either of you can answer. 30 seconds to you. Whoever goes first, the other one will get to answer. What is the worst and most pressing street, sidewalk, stoplight, or overall transportation issue in Ward 1? What specifically drives you nuts while you're driving around the city? 30 seconds, either of you.
In Ward 1, Second and Broadway would be tops, I think. As I was trying to turn left out of one of the alleys, I literally couldn't see around one of the historical buildings. I think there's a lot of there, but there's also a lot of support and a lot of momentum. That's why we need a dedicated transportation plan that we can give the voters for an up or down vote. That's what I'm committed to doing. I'm putting in place that group. I've already reached out to those that appropriate funds. I've talked to our different stakeholders. If we want to get moving on transportation, I would say we need to vote for Tom because that's where I'm moving, and I'm fully dedicated to that.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley, same question to you, 30 seconds. Your biggest traffic/transportation nightmare?
I think that Second and Broadway definitely needs some improvement, and I'm excited, if you weren't aware, but it is getting improvement. It will be part of the resurfacing project, all of Second and all of Broadway. And so that's really cool, set to start actually in about two weeks. And there's also a lot of other road construction projects that are in the forefront, coming our way. So as far as dedicating more time and money to that, I feel like it's already getting some. I will continue that. I'll pick up the baton and continue to work with that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Now, for the next two questions, I would like to welcome to the stage UCentral Media student Eden Jones. She is a journalism senior. She is coming up this way. Joe is hobbling off that way. Once you reach a certain age, you shouldn't play pickup football on the weekends, I suppose. And Ms. Jones, thank you for being here with us today. You have the next question for Mr. Robbins.
I do. Thank you so much for having me today. Welcome to UCO. I'm so happy that you are all here on the campus in the school that I love so much. So thank you for having me. My first question is for Mr. Robbins. It's one of those traffic questions that Trace mentioned. You are obviously big on transportation. You mentioned it in your opening statement and a lot in your previous answers. So unfortunately, a lot of people in the metro area and probably in this room associate Edmond with terrible traffic, and the city recently reduced its public transit service to and from Oklahoma City. When we look at the big picture, what needs to happen to improve transportation and transit in Edmond and central Oklahoma?
So number one, we need to have a unified plan with both our federal delegation, our state delegation, our county commissioner, Miles Davis, who represent us, and the city government. And the citizens have to fully understand what that is so they can go to a website, click on what's happening, and that there is a dedicated six-to-eight-year road plan so they're not just reacting to the signs going up. Another thing that I would mention that would be very important that I've been talking to people about is we need to have really robust communication with our Edmond Public Schools. So as they purchase land or look for things, for example, we have a wonderful new facility up at Rosebud Elementary, a great building, great staff. The challenges there is, as parents and grandparents and guardians know, is you have a two-lane, no-shoulder, you're into the bar ditch, stoplight situation, and pickup and drop-off is an excruciating, stress-inducing, sitting in line, trying to get those kiddos out. And there's not a great route or transportation for any walking or anything like that. And so what I would ask for is just simply identifying someone over at EPS that when plans go up for review and approval, that they know and have signed off and said, "Okay, this is what we feel the impact is," and then vice versa, so they can let us know. We need to be all hands on deck when it comes to that. Right now, we're not even able to provide, you know, the wages that we need for our school bus drivers, for example. So further exacerbating that problem in the morning and in the afternoon, we have pickup and drop-off. So it's going to take a team effort. I have a plan to have dedicated, transparent transportation funding for Edmond. We'll work with our federal delegation, our state delegation, and we'll get it done, and we'll get Edmond moving.
All right. Thank you. Same question goes to you, Ms. Bradley. When we look at the big picture, what needs to happen to improve transportation and transit in Edmond and central Oklahoma?
I believe that there's already some really great groundwork that's been done by the current council and mayor. I think that, similar to what I've said earlier, is that I'll pick up the baton and I'll continue to fight for that for us. I agree that we have to work with multiple parties to make sure that this is best for us. I think that expanding roadways is going to help tremendously. And I'd like to look at partnering with the businesses because they're going to benefit from that additional roadwork help. I also agree with talking to, you know, multiple parties and seeing what's available to us, what we can get. Exhaust all options is where I'm at, and I think we can do it together.
All right. Next question, we're going to start with Ms. Bradley. Last month, national members of the Urban Land Institute analyzed Edmond and recommended that local leaders consider closing Main Street between South Broadway Avenue and South Littler Avenue to create a, quote, "Main Street Square" as a focal point for pedestrians to orient themselves in and around town. Would you support or oppose closing Main Street to traffic and creating Main Street Square?
I remember that, actually. I was honored to have been asked to interview with the ULI, and I thought it was a really great thing for us to do. One of the things that I love is that when we're not an expert in something, we reach out to those who are. And any idea is a great idea, especially we can get as many as possible. I am at a toss-up with that because I can see how it would be really great for downtown Edmond, but I also understand how it could be a headache for people who drive in and out of downtown. I would prefer that we put something as big of an impact as that to a vote of the people.
Same question goes to you, Ms. Robbins. Would you support or oppose closing Main Street to traffic and creating Main Street Square?
So when that came up, like I said, I've had dozens of meetings with different stakeholders and business leaders. So I went straight to those that do, you know, herd-on-herd, and met and talked with Jill Castilla there. And, you know, ultimately, we have a great thing going in downtown Edmond and a lot of momentum. Without a dedicated transportation plan for the city of Edmond, if we go and start closing things off and don't have an understanding where that's going to flow, it's basically like turning up the heat on a, you know, tea kettle, and that pressure is building and then doesn't have a route to get out to. So if we're going to talk about that, and I've, you know, I've spoke at and met with the Downtown Edmond Business Council and others, we need to have a very fluid dialogue with them as far as the economic impact and how people can get to their businesses and have accessibility because that drives growth. So I've had multiple stakeholder meetings in that area. And so I can say now, there's some skepticism around that, but if it's part of a master plan in regards to transportation and getting the citizens down there and keeping everybody with the great events, with Vibes and with Herd-on-Herd and all those events like we have, like the cycling race, you know, there's a lot that can be done that is mentioned in the ULI plan. But I will, you know, honor the investment that's happening downtown with the people that are putting, you know, sales tax dollars to work and are starting and creating businesses and employing people, and I will look to them for their input, so I'm not doing it without, you know, just on a whim.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Ms. Jones, thank you so much. Brilliantly done. Give her a round of applause real quick. Great representation of the wonderful programs they have here at UCO and the UCentral Media program as well. Catch her on the television cast on Mondays, Wednesdays, various days, whenever. Check it out. It's about 4:30. Joe, thank you for being back on the stage. I believe I have the next question, and I'll start with Mr. Robbins. More than $80 million of the city's slated transportation infrastructure projects have unidentified funding, and Edmond is the only city in Oklahoma with more than 50,000 residents that has not used what are called general obligation bonds to fund city projects like this. Would you favor using issuing general obligation bonds, which would have to pass by a ballot question, to fund those projects?
Absolutely. So I call it "we" Edmond. We need to be one-team, one-Edmond. And to do that, we need to identify what are the greatest needs, and then we need to be able to rank those and provide a direct line of funding. I believe without a doubt that our citizens are willing and want to support that we have good transportation, good public safety, and, you know, the things like parks and other things that we all care about in recreational spaces. What we need and what they deserve is leadership. And that leadership to, after the stakeholder meetings and after those 18, 19, 20 plans have been done, to be able to put it on the line to the vote of the people. As Trace mentioned, it has to go to them. It's a 60% vote. It's a high threshold. And so what I would do is put that all together, and I would offer that to the people. I had a great meeting just yesterday morning with the Edmond Pickleball Association. They have over 2,000 members who play pickleball at the old, you know, now old tennis courts right next to the revamped golf course. They were like, "Hey, we don't have heat and air in here. By the way, like, the floor sweats, you know? We don't have places to sit down." And I was like, "Wow." This is a perfect thing that's being utilized by a lot of people in our senior community and younger folks to be able to have community, to meet their neighbors, to be active. So those are the type of things. Now, the citizens might say, "No, we don't want to do that." As a leader, I want to put that out to them, and if they turn it down, then we know the cards that we have as far as long-term planning. But I call that leadership. We're going to be able to engage in that dialogue, and I will put that opportunity for Edmond voters to have that up or down.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bradley, same question to you, 90 seconds. Would you support using general obligation bonds to fund some of these transportation projects or potentially other projects, as he mentioned?
Yes, I would. I think that the most important part is that we educate the community and let them know what funding these projects is actually going to bring. I agree that it is a "we" thing, and so I want to help spread that awareness and knowledge to our community, let them know that we do need to do this together and that these are ways that we can help. And they're only going to build better bridges between them. I think that putting it up to a vote of the people ultimately allows them to decide that. But I think first, we have to encourage them to be informed about what it's going to do for their community.
Thank you very much. Joe, you have the next question.
Ms. Bradley, we'll start with you this time. In October 2021, 2021, yes, Edmond voters overwhelmingly chose to tax themselves to purchase land next to E.C. Hayford Park for preservation. Now, conversations are underway surrounding that use of the land, which is set to be placed under a conservation easement. Did you support buying that land and stopping the proposed development on that property? And what would you like to see in terms of its future use?
So yes, I was supportive of it. I actually created the online petition that brought more awareness to what was projected to happen on that land, which was going to... devastate and destroy 22 acres of natural wildlife habitat and mature trees. I think that, I believe that when you get rid of green space like that, you can't just get it back. So it was very important to me, still is, and I am excited that it is going into a conservation easement. I love the idea that we are turning something as important as land into a learning potential for not just today's community, but tomorrow's community, too. It's going to be utilized in a way that kids and people of all ages can go out and experience nature in a city that, quite frankly, doesn't have it just around every block. I was lucky and fortunate to grow up on a farm, and so I got to experience a lot of that. And it's sad that I meet kids that have never experienced that type of nature. So I'm pretty excited for the plans to have minimal trails and an outdoor classroom that people of all ages are going to get to learn about nature.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins, same question. Did you support buying that land and stopping the proposed development on that property? And how would you like to see it used? 90 seconds.
Yes, I did. And I think the monies that were provided, I've seen a presentation call for its, you know, conservation use, and I support that. And I believe that just shows us that when Edmond voters are given a clear choice to be able to vote in favor of something that they support, when they see, like, we'll use the example of the penny jar going directly to that penny project and funding that, and they have confidence in it and it's transparent, that's what Edmond voters want, and they're willing to support that. You know, it's not just that, but we have other great things. One of the most exciting things that's going to happen in our community is one of the largest philanthropic donations and investments in Edmond history. And I've met with those that are giving those dollars and are planning. And it's the Uncommon Ground Park. And this is going to preserve and dedicate a place of land that'll be used and be an art park. There's going to be an outdoor learning center. And I said, great, we need to go run over to Edmond Public Schools and tell them that there is now a privately funded area that they'll be able to bring art classes and to be able to do different seminars. There'll be a dog park. There'll be a splash pad. So we have people who are willing to invest if given the chance, which I want to be able to do them, but they'll also be given the opportunity. We just have great citizens. We have people that are willing to invest in this community, and we need to magnify those efforts. And as a city councillor, you know, I want to be in the position to be able to help magnify those on behalf of Edmond.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're running a little bit early on time, so I'm going to throw in another question, Joe. This is going to be a toss-up. 60 seconds to either of you. If elected, you will be required to serve on two committees from the city. You'll be appointed by the mayor to those. What citizen committees interest you the most? 60 seconds to either of you. Let's talk about our committees. Joe, I don't really know that many committees, but Joe does, so he wrote this question.
So I'll go first. Obviously, I have an affinity for parks and rec, just because. And I also would really like the fine arts. My mom is a retired art and photography teacher, so I've grown up with art and creativity in my life. I love the thought of helping out, bring more of that recognition and awareness to arts. And then also, I love the idea of helping out with our parks and just what we can do to make them more available to people. And by that, I mean, what can we do to bring more people to them? What can we do to make them more presentable? And also, how can we put certain aspects in them that help nature and help... I'm losing my words. But basically, I just want something that can make us all kind of cohesive and not just the parks being a fun place, but also we can give back to the parks.
I think you were looking for expanded horseshoe pits. That was, I think, what we were looking for.
That is a thousand percent.
Those who know me know that's a running joke. I love horseshoes. Mr. Robbins, 60 seconds to you. Your top committees?
So for me, this isn't a hypothetical. When I saw that there was a need in our community and I had a background in transportation and planning, I reached out to my city councilman, and I asked to be on the Edmond shift, and I was able to serve and attend some of those meetings in regards to that. And that really sparked in me in a thought process of, wow, we need to get outside this committee and really be bold and engage our federal partners who have appropriated dollars, our state delegation. We have 11 representatives who represent Edmond at the state capitol who've endorsed me. And we need to also look at our county. And so I've done that work. Another one that really, that I'm really passionate about is my wife is a mental health councillor, and our police are leading an effort here regionally to address mental health issues, and our city council has appropriated some dollars for North Care. And so not every time that we send our police out, our first responders, you know, they need to be ready and prepared to protect themselves, but they also need all the resources. And those are mental health resources. And so I've met with people that have been at the National Association of Mental Health here and, you know, had breakfast with them, and I told them, hey, I'm committed to that. I want to see that through. I want to see us be a leader in Edmond with those mental health resources.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. That's the end of round two. Give them a round of applause. Doing a great... And Mr. Robbins, you led perfectly into round three, which is titled "The Proper First Response." We're going to talk a little bit about key components of public safety in Edmond. First, I've got a hand raise. So raise your hand if it's a yes. Keep your hand down if it's a no. If someday in the future you ever decided to run for mayor, would you stand on a stage in debate and answer questions with your opponent about matters of public safety and other issues facing the city? Raise your hand if it's a yes. That seems pretty reasonable to me. Okay, thank you both. I thought it's...
I think I know where you're going with that, Trace.
Yeah, well, I just, we always try to get people on the record. So if you're running for mayor in four years or two years, you know, we'll give you a call. Okay, Joe, you have the first question for round three.
Yes. Mr. Robbins, this first question will be for you. Edmond's ambulance service contract with IMSA, a public trust, has faced significant scrutiny owing to IMSA's failure to meet certain response time metrics. Some people believe the city should seek a new medical transport service provider. Others believe a change could impair public safety further. Do you believe the city should stick with IMSA or seek another medical transport service provider?
So this isn't the first time that I'm hearing this question. This is something I've been paying attention to for a while, and I actually watched all the Oklahoma City non-doctom debates, and this was brought up as a concern. The response times from IMSA are not acceptable. And right now, they're front-loading that with, you know, contractors to be able to fill in the gap, but long-term, we need to have a solution here. And so months ago, I met with both the fire chief, I met with the police chief, I met with the emergency response director here for the city of Edmond, I met with both the firefighting association, and I met with the fraternal order of police. I attended the budget proposal and presentation at city council chambers as one of the few citizens who showed up to be able to do that. And I got up and asked a question, and I've asked every single one of them where we're at on that. The bottom line is if we need to do it on our own, we can. It would be difficult, and we'd probably need the support of the people and look at dedicated funding. There is some momentum, which I would support, at looking at alternative providers that are smaller, where their first call and first duty is to Edmond. The challenge is, as though we're providing a lot of the funding right now, we're not necessarily at the top of the list because they have to provide services to Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City, this is not a joke. You can fit all of Los Angeles inside the geographical boundaries of Oklahoma City. Let me say that again. You can fit all of Los Angeles inside the geographical boundaries of Oklahoma City. So when they have to have coverage for that, it's a challenge. And so I know about this issue. I talked to a young woman who, unfortunately, and she has a business downtown, her mom passed away because, and she believes in large, because of the atrocious response time. So it's personal. I've been focused on it. I've talked to stakeholders, and it's definitely something that we're going to address.
Ms. Bradley, same question. Should the city stick with IMSA or find another provider?
I personally understand what response time can do and what it can be. And I was on the unfortunate end of it being a death and not a life. And so this is super important to me. I would make it one of the most priority tops that I have at all the second that I come in. I believe, and I know that we have a contract renew coming up, I think that we need to hold their feet to the fire. We cannot accept this type of response time. We just can't. And whatever method that we can determine and find that will help, we've got to go with that, even if it's a short-term fix. I'm better with a short-term fix that makes us hit those time marks than sticking with somebody and hoping they just improve. I don't know what that looks like, but I want to have those hard conversations because nobody in this community or any community deserves a bad response time.
I just want to follow up real quickly and kind of make sure we clarify you guys' positions. Ms. Bradley, I'm hearing that you are leaning toward making a change because what's currently is not working. Is that right?
Yes, I want to hold them accountable for the bad response times.
Mr. Robbins, are you leaning toward making a change, or are you leaning toward...
Oh, yes. All options are on the table, and it's not an automatic renewal by any means. And I think our citizens deserve a thoroughly vetted process and know exactly what their options are for public safety.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure we were clear. Ms. Bradley, I have the next question for you first. Owing to design defects, staffing problems, and other issues, the Oklahoma County Jail has seen a wave of deaths in recent years. County voters approved building a new jail later this decade, but safety concerns at the existing facility remain. Should Edmond continue sending people to the current Oklahoma County Jail, or should the city consider looking at other options, such as potentially contracting with Logan County to the north?
I feel like we should look at the options of going to Logan County. Safety for anyone who is in jail is just as important as safety for us in this room or in our community. There's still people, they deserve that at bare minimum. So yes, I support looking at other options.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robbins. Same question to you, 90 seconds. Should Edmond stick with the current facility for the next two or three, four years, or should other options be on the table?
I mean, I would just ask yourself a question that I was talking to our police chief about, and that we were discussing. If you had a loved one, because all of us have different, you know, backgrounds in our family, and if you had a loved one that, for whatever reason, something happened to them where they were sent to the county jail, would you feel comfortable with them sleeping there at night? I wouldn't. And I'm so dedicated to this issue, I sought out Oklahoma County Sheriff Tommy Johnson and was like, help me help you understand all this, and with our commissioner, Miles Davis. And that's why they've both endorsed my campaign, because months ago, I went to them with this question and others and said, how do we address this? So yes, I'm glad that there's money that's been appropriated and that our county is finally getting to the point where we're going to rip down a jail that since day one, because of its design flaws, was not fit for anybody to be held there in a humane way. And so, you know, our police and fire are very flexible. We have dedicated funding that I will always commit to. Our public servants will always have what they need as far as resources and training. And so I believe if we go to them and say, let's get creative about this. What are some options, Logan and others? They could offer some of those up. But no, I am not in any way, shape, or form happy with the number of deaths, injuries, the lack of staff, the lack of safety for anyone involved. And it doesn't serve those that are incarcerated there. It doesn't serve the victims as things get bumbled and lost and shuffled around. We need a judicial system when we're sending people down from Edmond that we can have confidence in.
Thank you very much. We've got a good segue to the next question, Joe.
Mr. Robbins, this one will be for you first. In 2022, Edmond Police made 288 arrests of 131 people who self-identified in booking reports as homeless or unhoused. Many of these arrests were for charges like trespassing, public intoxication, or failing to appear for a previous charge. Infractions, these are infractions that reflect the reality of living on the street. Edmond currently lacks a local homeless shelter. Do you believe the city has an obligation to take care of the homeless citizens within the city limits? And would you support the city building a homeless shelter?
We're a community that takes care of others, and some of that's manifested by community outreach and organizations, other by our churches and organizations. But I believe we're a compassionate community, and so I absolutely want to address this issue. I believe that we now have a team in place that's looking at this holistically. And so for the first time in Edmond's history, we have a dedicated North Care, which is a mental health, you know, group that can go out and help do evaluations. So if people do want and need services, they can be able to do so. As I mentioned, I met with two parents who have spent and worn out their lives on behalf of a daughter who has just, you know, struggled with schizophrenia and bipolar, and they've struggled through that and where the resources are. They have a proposal to do something that is in other, in other cities across the country, to have what they call a clubhouse drop-in, where people who are struggling with mental illness or might be in and out of some of those homeless issues, might be able to be vetted, but then when they shown up, they have a community that understands them, that they're getting job and help and training. Again, that's the type of thing that we need to be giving directly to our voters, who, as a compassionate community, if understanding where that penny goes, to that penny plan can, and I believe will give it a thumbs up, but it's that type of leadership that Edmond needs. And if they don't, we'll go back to the table with the cards that we have and address the services that we do. But we're a compassionate community, and I know we can get it done.
Just real quick, though, I want to be sure. Are you in favor of whether it's city-built or, you know, maybe the city supports a private enterprise nonprofit? Should there be a homeless shelter in Edmond? Yes, yes or no?
Yes. We need something in this city where there's a bed. My understanding is at the North Care Facility, someone can be there, but it's only for about 24 to 48 hours. It's limited in scope. And so just like we need attainable housing, we also need to look at options for people in and out of housing and housing needs with a coalition of community partners.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradley, same question. Do you believe the city has an obligation to take care of homeless citizens? And would you support the city building a shelter?
Yes, I do think it's our obligation. I think that these are people, just like all of us, and that at any given point, we could all fall victim to that. So to treat them less than is, quite frankly, it's not us. It's not this community. And I refuse to allow our community to ever get to a point where we look, where we look down on people just because they don't have a home. I fully support building a homeless shelter for people. I remember, I recall reading that in doing so, our current council member, David Chapman, mentioned that it could exasperate the problem. And he wasn't sure, I will give him that, but I would like to point out that I look at it more as an iceberg, where we only see the tip of it because it's just what's easily viewable there. A couple people on the street here and there. We have no way of knowing exactly how big the issue actually is. So in building a homeless shelter, we are allowing our community to be more caring and understanding for the people that need it the most at that particular point in time. So yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bradley, I've got the next question to you. In January, a year-long investigation into allegations of racism, sexism, and workplace bullying by a deputy chief of the Edmond Police Department was completed by a prominent law firm. The allegations were made by another department leader who has since left EPD. The city has denied our request for the findings of the report, and to my knowledge, we don't really know what the results of the investigation were, whether there was any action recommended or taken. Do you believe that at least a summary of the law firm's report paid for by the city should be released to the public?
I do believe that it should be released to the public. I think that we all deserve to know what's going on with our first responders, with our police, with our leadership in this town. I think that's important, and I think that transparency is something that currently kind of lacks in multiple departments. So yes, I do believe that it needs to be, at bare minimum, a summary of what has gone on and what has happened.
Mr. Robbins, same question to you. Do you believe that that should be released?
Yeah, I think a summary report would be helpful. I want to have a city that has confidence always. We do that by not acting out of fear, but just working in facts. And so we want to bring facts to light. And that, you know, that comes with, you know, all of, you know, city government is, you know, one of the most important things, I think, in all of city council is our citizen comments, you know? And I think that's an important time to be able to hear from our residents. A couple of things on that. I mean, there's just, I've been to a lot of city council meetings, and I think some simple things, like just putting a little timer that has like a light when people go up there, so they don't, you know, have to hear a blaring noise or something. I think maybe even having an allowing for comments upfront, so citizens who have, you know, got to get home to kids, have daycare, have jobs, are doing a lot of different things, can maybe, you know, we could provide for two or three comments upfront, so they don't have to sit through, you know, an entire, you know, presentation on, you know, sewage or whatever it may be to get to that. So I prioritize the input of our citizens. I think transparency, and it goes hand in hand with trust. And as a city councillor, I will work to be able to not act out of fear, but act out of facts. But that applies in a wide variety of situations that impact our community.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. We do have just a couple more minutes, and I'm going to just throw one out here. This has been a really good discussion, very informative. Have loved hearing it. You both have agreed on a lot of matters. I'm going to ask it, 60-second toss-up. Where do you think the biggest difference between you and your opponent is? And whoever wants to go first, we're going to give each of you 60 seconds. Neither of them wants to do it.
I think, Trace, what you're picking up on is, you know, you know, Ashley and I, like, we actually had a coffee as we were starting to run. And first of all, we found out that neither of us had horns on our head, okay? We're just citizens who want to serve our community. We might have different national politics. We might have different priorities and things like that. But I like that this is a nonpartisan office because, you know, we bleed Edmond, not one or the other. or, or the other. You know, if I were to say where there's, you know, differences, I would just point to day one, I am ready to hit the ground running, because I've worked on a lot of these issues and built the coalitions, and that's why I have the endorsements that I have, while also taking into consideration our residents and the people that are here and the mental health issues. And so I think there is maybe, the only thing I would point out, you know, very strongly would just be inexperience. But, you know, when people ask me questions, as I have in other forums, like, well, why would you be a better? We're not better people. We're both citizens of Edmond. We want to serve, we want to serve Edmond together. And I would, if I get two more seconds, I actually had something where, I mean, somebody online was literally calling me like a book burner fascist Nazi. It went on and on and on. I reached out to her, and I said, what's going on here? And it was resolved. So like, because she had nothing to do with it, right? And so I like that kind of public service and people that you can talk to and people that can run. And I think that if we have people who step up and realize it's not scary to run for public office, we'll be better off if more citizens throw their hat in the ring, and we're better off.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bradley. Let's give you 90 seconds. Same kind of question. Where do you think the biggest difference for voters to see between the two of you would be?
Yeah, I, I, I want to just mention again the, the limited experience and really highlight that point and why it's a pro for me. The reason that it is, is because I come into this position with no preconceived notion. I don't have any influence. I'm not biased to any particular group. I am supported 100% by Edmond residents. I am an Edmond resident, so I am only obligated to Edmond residents. I just want to help the community. I don't have any, any indication or inkling to run for any political office. I wasn't even anticipating this. This was more of an opportunity for me to just help the community and give them another option in representation. So my biggest thing is that I'm going to bring a fresh set of eyes that are different, and difference's not bad. Maybe it'll get some new ideas running.
Thank you very much. Great conversation. Give them a round of applause. That's the end of round three. And now we're going to go to our closing statements for the two minutes. We flipped that coin. Mr. Robbins, you're going to go first in closing statements. Two minutes to you.
Well, I, I consider it a privilege just to be able to have my name on the ballot, and it's humbling. And to be able to go and see that and feel your name, and I know comes with great responsibility, and I don't take that trust lightly. And so with every issue, I will promise you this, my door will be open, I will listen, and I am here to help make Edmond the best place for you to call home, the best place to raise a family, best place to have your grandkids. If I embarrass you, it's because we're talking and I have food in my mouth. And tell me about it, please. It's not because I will say something or, or do something. Why? Because I'm focused on the issues that matter. Transportation, education, recreation, public safety, tourism, the things that make this city run and make it great. The way that I've been described is energy. Whereas I talk to people, they say, man, you have a fresh set of eyes, and you have a million ideas, and like, you just want to go. That's right. Because we're stuck here, sometimes literally in traffic, sometimes with the way that we think. But all of us, because we're here in this community, have chose to live here. Why? Because we want to know our neighbor. We want to be able to go to schools and want to be able to be where we're at. Literally, my phone's buzzing. It's my, it's my son, you know? Edmond Block Works, he's climbing. And he's like, are you going to pick me up at 7:00? Our kids are here. We want it so our public servants can live here. We want it so that we have great schools. So my commitment to you is that, Edmond, Oklahoma, my lens will always be, is this the best place to call home? The best place to raise a family, the best place for our grandkids to either live or come and visit? And I will focus on transportation, education, recreation, and public safety. And I will take into account all the input, but I am ready with a ball of energy to be able to take that confidence with your vote. So I ask for your vote. I'd be honored to have your support, and I hope to serve you on Edmond City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Bradley, two minutes to you to close us out for the night.
Yeah, so I just want to, again, thank you guys so much for hosting this debate. It was a really great opportunity, and thanks, everybody, for attending and watching. And thank you, Tom, for also doing this. I'm glad that we both were able to. It's nice for this community to see two options that they have for city council, and I think that they can be pretty happy that they have these two. I just want to repeat a few things because it's what I do. And I want everybody to know that, you know, I'm running for Edmond City Council because, oh my gosh, I thought the mic was going to fall.
We almost made it throughout without a microphone disaster. There you go. Go ahead.
You're welcome. So, because I am running for city council because I am different, and this is some